We'll call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. And let the roll call show that all members of the council are present this evening. And acting instead of our city manager Wayne Pilate who's out on medical leave this week, we have our assistant city manager Paula Isaac with us. Paula, good to have you with us.
Thank you, sir.
Our opening ceremony this evening, it's council member Beulah's turn to lead us in an opening ceremony. Council member?
Thank you, Mayor. And since we just got back, you might have noticed we all filed in here a little bit later than maybe we usually do. We usually just come from the room next door. But we were meeting our new best friend, Don Shula, former Miami and Baltimore Colts football coach, over at Shula's 347 Grill. And since he's our new best friend, I wanted to play a little video in honor of him.
Miami is legendary for its sandy beaches, crystal blue water, and soothing sun. But there is another legend here just as popular that's been decades in the making.
Give a little doggy hug, you're doing a nice formation for the winningest coach of all time in the National Football League.
You just try to wow and do the best that you can do with the ability that God has given you.
Don Shula defined the Miami Dolphins. For 26 years, he led the team and became the NFL's winningest coach ever until his retirement in 1995.
I feel good about the decisions I've made.
You've been here for about 20 years in this house?
Yeah. And when we get all of the kids and the grandkids, this is where we have our games, right here. Slipping and sliding, bumping into each other, throwing and catching.
Recently, Coach Shula invited me into his Miami home for a glimpse of his life as a retired legend.
The jacuzzi out there that...
How often do you get in that?
I try to do it almost every night, you know, right around sundown and sit there and, you know, before I go to bed. Well, life is good, you know, I gotta think about what golf course I'm gonna play. And then hopefully there will be an NFL game on Sunday or Monday night that I can watch. At this stage of my life, I'm very happy.
Life may be a bit slower, but Shula stays busy with his chain of 26 steak houses around the country and as a spokesperson for Nutrisystem, a diet on which he lost more than 30 pounds.
I just feel so much better. My hips feel better, my knees feel better, my back feels better, I get a bigger turn on my golf swing. So all those things are good.
His home office is filled with memories of his 33 years in the NFL.
That had to be, you know, the highlight right there.
Oh, babe.
Yeah, presented by my two sons.
Do you miss coaching?
I do. I miss gaming more than anything else, you know. I was a head coach for 33 years in the National Football League, seven with the Colts and then 26 with the Miami Dolphins. So I was pretty much set in my way of life, my routine, on game day and, you know, all the exciting things that happened in that three-hour period of time. I'd find myself waking up in the middle of the night, you know, replaying the game, sometimes trying to change the score.
The Dolphins were a team whose strength was in its balance rather than brilliance.
There was no revision needed in 1972 when Shula led the Dolphins to a historic undefeated season. That perfect season ended with a Super Bowl victory over the Washington Redskins.
Well, it was such a big day for us because toward the end of the year, you know, we realized 13-0, 14-0, 15-0, nobody had ever done that. So now we have a chance to do something that nobody else has ever done. But that still didn't mean as much as getting to the Super Bowl and winning.
Shula wears that Super Bowl ring every day, which he graciously gave me to try on.
Give him back.
Wow. Okay, nice meeting you. Really enjoyed it. See you later.
Professionally, his accomplishments are endless. The same goes for his life off the field, which he shares with his wife Mary Ann, his five children, and 16 grandchildren.
Everybody thinks that these are game balls, scores of games, but they're really the names of our grandkids and their birthdays.
In this modern world, he tries to teach his grandkids some old-fashioned lessons.
You got the computers, you got the video games, you got the TVs, and I try to keep them away from all of that. Yet he certainly can learn things from it, but I still want them to be out on the playground, to go out and mixing with the kids in the neighborhood and playing and, you know, getting those lessons in life. And Joe DiMaggio over here.
And among all the photos of famous faces here, this most cherished one.
It's my mom and dad here.
Shula attributes his success to his parents, who raised him with a strong Catholic faith and taught him a strong work ethic. In motivational speeches, he likes to say, "Success is not forever, and failure is not fatal."
You gotta pick yourself up off of the floor. Try to learn something positive from any negative experience that you've ever gone through. I've been very fortunate, you know, I've always tried to do the right thing, I've always tried to surround myself with the best people, give them the opportunity to express themselves and then make the right decisions.
Coach, you may call this a silly question, but would you ever consider coaching again?
And I've been out of coaching now, I guess, 12 years. And people say, "Hey, we want you back, we want you back." And I get that all the time. And on game day, you know, I wouldn't mind being involved for a three or four hour period of time, but I don't want the morning, noon, and night, the endless days and the long nights. And, you know, I had 33 years of that pleasure and that's about all I could handle.
As I watched that video earlier, I was impressed with the things that are important to him, number one, family, hard work, things that we value here in our community. And now that Don Shula is here in West Valley, right now, he's a friend to us, you know, I want our city to be the kind of place where we can be friends to him. And one thing that we need is better housing stock if we're gonna have people like Don Shula come have a summer home here or spend time here. And we want to get them out on our golf courses, which are nice, and the one being rebuilt this summer. And I just wanted to acknowledge him, what a great man he is and a good friend that he is now to West Valley City. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilman Beulah, very appropriate. And he's right, Don Shula is in our city right now, we were just spending some time with him and he'll be there doing some media interviews and whatnot this evening next door at the brand-new Embassy Suites Hotel and the Shula's 347 Grill, which, by the way, is after his 347 wins as an NFL coach. That's why it's called the Shula 347. So thank you. By way of special recognitions, we have a lot of scouts here tonight, I'm excited to see that. We have a tradition in our council chambers where we invite one boy from each troop or each pack to come up to the microphone and introduce your group. I see some Cubs here on the front row, is there a boy in the pack that wants to come up, maybe the oldest one? Yeah, just come to the microphone, tell us your name and your pack number and what you're working on today.
Uh, my name is Tommy Ryan Nancy, I'm 10 years old, and we're from Greensboro. Um, my pack number is 4151, and we came here to run up our citizenship.
Awesome, welcome, good to have you. Let's see, and so all you Cubs are with that group, I see a few Boy Scout groups. Anyone, there senior patrol leader, patrol leader that wants to come up? So again, just tell us your name and your troop number and what you're working on tonight.
Uh, I'm Hunter Rasmussen, and my troop number is 926, and we're working on citizenship.
Great. Which one, in the community probably?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, good. Okay, thank you, welcome. Now, let's see, back row. All the good future Eagle Scouts here.
Uh, my name is David Luze, we're from the troop 179, 137th ward, and we're here to work on communication. Everybody?
Right, thanks David. Good to have you guys with us. Any other scout groups we've missed? It's hard to know where one group stops and one ends. Got everybody? Okay, well, welcome, good to have you all with us tonight. We have a special Employee of the Month presentation to make this evening. And that's with our, to Brian in our Public Works Department, and that's gonna be made by Don Christensen.
Brian, would you like to stand up for a second while we embarrass you? Brian Mazaron is the street lighting supervisor for the Public Works Department. And his nomination says, "Brian started working for the city in November 2001 as a journeyman electrician. His duties included electrical repairs, assisting other departments with electrical needs, replacing parking lot light bulbs, hanging and removing banners from light poles, and minor repairs on traffic signal lights, among other duties. In 2009, the city took over the maintenance of 8,000 streetlights from Rocky Mountain Power in a cost savings move for the city. Enter Brian Mazaron, a loyal employee to West Valley City, an independent worker that doesn't require a lot of supervision. He enjoys the flexibility that his position offers him, and he enjoys working outdoors. When it comes to streetlight maintenance in West Valley City, Brian is almost a one-man show. Brian will come to work before sunrise to drive the neighborhood streets to inventory burnt-out streetlights. He usually makes the repair at that time or makes a note to return for repairs. Brian is quick and efficient. He fulfills service requests on lighting problems at a rate of 80 to 95 percent. Most requests are completed the same day they are filed, or within three days, depending on whether a part needs to be ordered and the type of repair. Many times Brian has made a repair the same day a request has been filed, or even before the request is filed. Brian never complains and will do whatever is requested of him. He is an asset to the city and contributes to the safety and overall appearance of West Valley City. On at least six occasions, West Valley citizens have made a point to come to City Hall to thank the city for the efforts of Brian, not even knowing his name. It is for these reasons and many more that Brian Mazaron should be recognized as Employee of the Month for January 2013. And he was nominated and submitted by multiple employees.
All right, if you'd like to come on in and shake our hands.
Congratulations, here's this, I'm sure that if somebody wants to take a picture of the winner, it's a good picture. There's a copy of the nomination and a couple other things here that might look interesting. Thank you, congratulations again.
Brian, any speeches or anything you wanna say? And you're doing it very well, we sure appreciate it.
Mayor, if I can throw something in, I'll embarrass Brian and under the guise of edifying the scouts. Years ago, I guess five years ago to be exact, when I was first elected, my first call that came from a resident, a member of the community, was something to the effect of, "Hey, Councilman Ruston, we have a..." I ride the bus every morning about 6:00 a.m., and when I go outside, it's a little dark out there because my streetlights burned out. And so, "Do you think you can do something to help me on this?" And so I forwarded it along to the city manager, and the next day, the light was fixed. And every time I see this person, which isn't too often, but they always mention that, "Oh, what a great job Councilman Ruston did on getting my streetlight fixed for me the next day." And so I guess this kinda comes full circle now that we have the person here that I can personally thank for that. And we know that you, along with many other city employees, you know, help make our jobs as the elected officials easier, and so, you know, appreciate and just share that with you today as it's, you know, something I've thought of from time to time, so.
That's a good one. Thank you, Brian.
I'd like to share a similar thing. When I was elected, I had a similar call. But unfortunately, the call that they had is they wanted the city to install a light switch on the pole so they could control it.
Well, maybe that's a hit for Brian to get Employee of the Month another time.
No switches, Brian, no. All right, well, good. Well, speaking of great employees, it's also that time where we do, once a quarter, we honor a division of the quarter, and Councilman Tom Hoon will give that nomination tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate the Facilities Division of Public Works for this prestigious award. The unique list of structure that the Facility Division has to build, remodel, replace, and manage on an hourly and daily basis is amazing. The Facility Division has overseen construction management of a concrete slab to hold an omeck head, project managing a seven-floor hotel building, engine air conditioning filters, replacing multi-level rotating performance stations, and general cleaning and maintenance of various buildings throughout the city. I truly believe that there is no other government in the state of Utah, or possibly in the United States, that has such a wide, a wide variety of city icons to build and then take care of on a daily basis. I have seen the endless work of this division over the years as they strive to keep all the, all the city's facilities signing and deal. I have seen them inspect and sometimes reject unsatisfactory or lazy work on many projects so that it is the size of profit. Pray for to everyone in the Facility Division, and submit by the committee committee.
Come on down, gentlemen. Me too, Jake. Let's do a group shot here.
Yes, it's a group shot.
You know, it's really true what was said in that nomination, as few cities have the facilities we do, whether it's helping to see that new hotel next door come to fruition, or the Maverick Center, or the Health Center Theater, or the Fitness Center, or the City Hall, or fire stations. And when you think of all the different facilities that they need to help keep an eye on, and unfortunately, that's being done in a time where there's less and less resources that can be spent on those buildings. And so, you know, the old song, "Making love out of nothing at all," that's kinda what you're asked to do so many times, is you're trying to figure out a fix here or a fix there. And so we really do appreciate it, and even things when we honor different committees and whatnot, whether it's helping with the chairs or refreshments or little things like that, from that to the nitty-gritty of the Cultural Celebration Center and all the buildings and facilities. So we really, really do appreciate the Facilities Team. And really, it's quite remarkable as a city that we get as much done with the handful of key employees there that we do, but that just speaks the volume of those key employees. So thank you so much. Council, any other comments on these guys?
Including driving the bus when needed.
That's right, it's all hands on deck, you never know when they'll be helpful. Well, thank you, that's a wonderful Employee of the Month and Division Award, and you young scouts who are looking for good role models in the future, there's some good men tonight that you've seen. We come to item six tonight, which is our public comment period. I don't think anyone signed up to speak this evening. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Councilmembers, any comments? Mr. Vincent?
Just a comment about Councilman Beulah's opening ceremony. I thought it was interesting as they talked about where Coach Shula had coached, that they said they had coached in Baltimore, and most of you, you scouts probably think that was the Ravens, but it wasn't the Ravens, it was the Colts, so.
Okay, any other council comments?
Well, just to expand on that, he took Baltimore to the Super Bowl and coached Johnny Unitas when he was, himself was a very young man. I think Johnny Unitas might have been older than Coach Shula was at the time.
Interesting legacy there. All right, let's go to item seven tonight.
I'm glad there's people that remember the Baltimore Colts.
For our public hearing tonight, we are receiving input regarding the application ZT-7-2012 regarding ordinance 13-06. Mr. Isaac, if you could please introduce that matter, please.
Thank you, and it's appropriate, seems to me, to the city to put before the council this text change, or an update, if you will, to the city center zone, just for the purpose of the scouts. This area right behind you was renamed by the city council back in September to the Fairborn Station Vision. And as a result of that, the old name for this particular area was the City Center Vision. Well, because of all the construction that's out there and all the changes that are taking place, this, this is, this hearing is to change some of the, and add to, some of the street names that no longer exist. We've now renamed some of those streets to coincide with the, with the vision of Fairborn Station. So this resolution just updates that particular part of the code.
Okay, thank you.
Or excuse me, part of the city center zone.
Yeah, so I know, open the public hearing regarding the application ZT-7-2012 related to ordinance 13-06. Is there anyone who's come to speak on that matter this evening? Anyone? Okay. Didn't think so, it's not very controversial, we're just changing a few names there. And then I now close the public hearing and turn it over to my colleagues on the council for their pleasure.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance 13-08, or six? Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, just a word to you scouts, sometimes it may seem we go rather fast on these decisions. Each week at 4:30, each Tuesday at 4:30, we meet next door around a table in a more informal study session or work meeting, where we cover all the agenda items that we'll be covering in the next week's meeting. So everything we go through today, we've discussed before and have been thinking about and considering for at least one week. Okay, we have a motion, a second there on 13-06. Any questions or further discussion there? Okay, all in favor of approving 13-06, say aye?
Aye.
Those who oppose? Okay, that passes unanimously. Mr. Isaac, please introduce 13-07.
This is just an amendment to city ordinance 12108, which allows the Police Department of the city to increase the fees charged for services such as fingerprinting and, and police reports and criminal history reports. This hasn't been done since 2006, and it's just time to revisit that because of the changes in technology and the cost of these services that we're providing.
Okay, thank you, sir. Council, what's your pleasure on 13-07?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance 13-07. Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion there? Okay, all in favor of approving 13-07, say aye?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Okay, that also passes unanimously. We have some resolutions to consider tonight. Mr. Isaac, please tee up 1320 for us.
This resolution is just to replace some equipment for the storm drain inspection. It's camera equipment that we use to literally put down into the drainage system so we can see what's going on down, down there.
So you scouts have seen those "We all live downstream" ads, where we're encouraged to not put junk in our storm drains, just water, and once one of these gets stuck, we have to put the high-tech cameras down and see what's going on so we can clean them out. And then we understand from our Public Works Director that camera's well outdated and not working like it should, and we need to get a new one here, so that's what we're gonna vote on or discuss. Anyone on 1320, like to make a motion?
A motion to approve resolution 13-20.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion of that motion? Okay, all in favor of approving 1320 by that new camera, say aye?
Aye.
Any who oppose? It also passes unanimously. Let's go to the next one, Mr. Isaac, 1321.
This authorizes the purchase of a 2013 F-150 truck from Ken Gar Ford for the use by the Fire Department.
Okay, thank you. And this is a first responder vehicle, we understand, that our chief himself will even be using. Any discussion to that one or a motion, councils?
I'll move for approval of 13-21.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion?
Just point out, I was talking to the chief after last week's meeting, and this will go from eight to 10 miles to the gallon to 15 to 20.
You mean his old vehicle to this?
His old vehicle to the new vehicle, so.
Good.
So it's a savings for the city in that way, too. And he'll no longer have to push it to the fires. Right.
And what did he say last time, Paula? His vehicle broken down 40 times in the last year?
Yeah, the maintenance costs are so prohibitive that it's better for us to actually purchase a new one.
We're a pretty frugal group, but when your fire chief breaks down 40 times on the way to a fire last year, you know it's time to get a new vehicle, so that's what we're discussing tonight. All right, all in favor of approving 1321, say aye?
Aye.
Those who oppose? Okay, thank you. 1322, Mr. Isaac.
This resolution authorizes the purchase of a new phone system for the city. In the past many, many years, we've, we really have an adequate phone system that uses analog and digital technology. This new phone system gives us IP capabilities that we don't have, and so it's about time we need to update that and change those things to get us into a better, more efficient operating situation.
Thank you. I loved the presentation on this, and we're actually saving money by going to a new system because it's actually cheaper to operate than the old one. And yet it gives us the high-tech to be as efficient as possible, too. Any motions on this one, council, 1322?
Mayor, move for approval of resolution 1322. Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of 1322, say aye?
Aye.
Those who oppose? Okay, that's also unanimous. 1323, Mr. Isaac.
This, this is also related to the new phone system. This authorizes the execution and delivery of a lease agreement to pay for the new phone system with SunTrust Equipment Finance and Leasing Corporation.
Okay, so the one we just passed is kind of important. Any motions here?
Mayor, move approval of resolution 1323.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, all in favor of resolution 1323, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's also unanimous. Mr. Isaac, 1326, please.
This'll also be something interesting to the scouts. Next, next summer, we're about ready to open up the new golf course that we've now called The Ridge. And this particular resolution authorizes the purchase of new golf carts for the use of that, at that golf course. We're purchasing over 80 golf carts.
Okay. It looks like here in our packet that that was the lowest responsible bid.
Yes, sir.
The Yamaha is quite a bit less expensive than club car or Easy Go. It looks like a good choice there. Council, any motions on that one?
Let's actually know for the record that we sold all the old golf courts, all the old golf carts when the course closed.
That's correct, sir.
We need to replace them. I think it might be, maybe interesting or helpful to have Mr. Richards come and maybe address the issue. I had a conversation with him about gas versus electric. Sure. I don't know if the council will be interested in that, but I thought it was interesting, so.
Okay, well, the request of one of our members, and seeing our golf pro Mike Richards here with us tonight, can you talk to us a little bit about these carts?
You bet. We thought a lot about going to electric when we reopened the golf course, but since we do a lot of tournament play out of the golf facility, what we ran into is with batteries, they're good for about three years, and once you get them, they continually start to, the charge on them dissipates a little faster, a little faster over the year, the three-year periods. So when we get into our second and third year, if we have a full shotgun tournament where we use every golf cart and all, all of the group comes off the golf course and we've got a full T-sheet right after the tournament to where we're sending play right out, if we don't have a fleet of golf carts to send right back out without having to charge them, then, you know, we will end up losing a lot of money. So that, that was kind of the main determining decision why we went with gas again. The Yamaha is the only company to build their own engine. They're, they're about 30% more gas efficient than the other two companies. They are a low emission, single overhead valve engine, very gas, or fuel efficient. They're about, let's see, they're, what'd they say, 30% more fuel efficient than the other ones, so they're, they're a really good golf cart. When we first opened, our first two fleets were Yamaha, and we had a lot of success with them, so. So, yeah, we're, we're pretty tickled for this fleet, so.
You know, if you have a place to fuel them right there at the...
We do, the maintenance building has a gas tank that we, we fuel them, and on our Range vehicle, we actually get a gas tank, a 200-gallon gas tank, so we aren't driving it.